Today, we welcome Wichita City Councilman Dalton Glasscock. We discuss all the hot topics going on around the city as well as many other interesting things. We hope you enjoy this one.
Dalton, thanks for coming on.
Of course, glad to be here. Thanks for the invitation.
Awesome. You're one of the youngest faces in Wichita politics. What made you want to throw your hat in the ring and get involved?
I've at the doors, I've answered this question a lot, so it's gonna sound like a curated response. But I was tired of my friends moving outside of the community. And I wanted to build a community that they wanted to come and they wanted to invest in. Make sure we have quality of life amenities and also that we have affordable options. Also, I was very involved in politics when I was younger. Uh, I was part of the mayor's youth council, so I'm the first person on the city council to have served on the mayor's youth council. And I saw a city that invested me when I was really young and gave me a voice when I was really young. I served on two of the district advisory boards across the city, sort of in the bicycle steering committee. I was an appointee to a couple of different committees in the city. And I saw that the city allowed and elevated my voice. And I wanted to make sure to do the same, create the same environment for younger people that also wanted to be involved. And I think representation matters. I think when people see people that look like them and their age, they realize they can also have a voice. And especially in Wichita, Wichita does a really good job at giving young people an opportunity if they're willing to put in the work to be able to get it done.
That's great. It's great to see a younger person in politics because I think that helps keep young talent here in town.
Yeah, we have a very different perspective. And so, I mean, I'm talking about issues, how do we build quality of life? One of the things I'm leaning now, I guess we're probably hopping into some things is the common consumption idea in Delano. And you know, other, most municipalities across the country can do this and do this well. It's a unique environment for young people, older people also to go and hang out. And so what are things that keep young talent here? Young people don't like to be bored. They want to, they want to actively engage. And I feel like now that I'm, you know, 31, I'm kind of inching out of the young people era. But still being the youngest person elected right now in the city council.
Not for a politician, you're not.
Not for a politician. We do have Nakvong on the school board for Wichita, who's younger than me. He got elected this past year, but he's the only other one of the three major governing parties that's younger in the city right now.
Oh, cool. Wow. How is it working with Republicans and Democrats, all of different ages? How is meshing, especially as a younger person, meshing together with people who are, you know, have been around a long time? Do they respect your opinion from the jump or is that something you have to earn?
I think you have to show up and realize that you deserve to be there. That especially I had, you know, 70,000 people in my district. I was elected to be there and I was elected because of my voice in the district. And to enter the room with that mindset of, hey, I know I'm younger, but people chose me for a particular reason and I'm here at the table. And so I want to have influence when I'm there. But I have respect for all of my colleagues. I have respect for everybody at the commission, everybody at the council, everybody at the school board, any of the other governing bodies. And I think genuinely, people are there because they want to help the community. Regardless of partisan affiliation, we have a lot of good people in a lot of leadership roles in the city and a lot of people that want to make sure that all voices are included. Sometimes it's difficult though, when you're a city of 400,000 people, how do you make sure that voices are elevated? Because often there's going to be losers in the situation where they're going to disagree ideologically with the decision, but still tell them, hey, your voice does matter. Don't give up. We may agree on something and I hope that you convince me to think differently about something. Because if I just walk in and think I have all the answers at 31, I would be sorely mistaken. But I do believe in our community, we have all the answers somewhere. We just had to figure out a way to find them.
What were you doing before being elected to public office?
Yeah, so I have a consulting company previously and I was doing a large scale utility wind and solar projects. Uh, and so I was going out there and equipping landowners with the tools to advocate for themselves, actually before legislative bodies. So I worked on projects, Kansas, Missouri, Nebraska, um, also have a radio station in Tennessee and have an incredible staff because this job has consumed really my entire life. And so luckily I have a good staff to do the day to day operations there because I probably advocated some of those duties to focus on here. And then prior to that, I worked for the United States House Representatives. I did military veteran affairs, uh, for the congressman and I love that work. And really, a lot of that work is work I still get to continue doing locally. A lot of those constituent service work. So let's say somebody had a problem at the VA. How do I help you get benefits? How do I make you trust or help you trust institutions more? You know, you had a problem with McConnell Air Force Base. How can I help navigate that system? And then in this role, let's say you have a pothole, like you reach out at the city council person. How can I slowly restore somebody's trust in local government? So a lot of my experience in previous roles have helped me in this role now. And honestly, the things I enjoy the most in the role too.
I like what you said before that about having an open mind. I hope that when more of our age people get into politics, there will be more of that. I feel like, especially on the national level, we see now, there's no open mind. It's either whatever side you're on, you fall directly in line or else, or else really.
Going to DC sounds awful, in my opinion. Like one, I get, I deal with, I'm one of seven. So I get to deal with, you know, if you're in politics, you have some level of ego. If you believe that you can represent somebody else and you want to put your name forward, there's some level of ego. So all seven of us have some type of ego. Imagine going to Washington DC and having to deal with 435 individuals that also have that. And so here locally, they're your neighbors, they're your friends, they're people you can talk to. And that's what I really like about local government. And so we have three Republicans, three Democrats, one Libertarian. The races are officially nonpartisan, so we don't run with the party. When you go to the ballot box, it's not going to show a party. Now we all have our ideological worldviews bring to the table. However, I would say I've been on the council a year and a half. We have maybe had six votes that are party line. When I say party line, I'm including the Libertarian. Technically, no vote has been party line because we have no clear majority of anybody on the city council. But I would say maybe six votes out of 200 votes I've taken have been strictly party line. You know, I usually side with fiscal conservatives on matters regarding the budget. But when it comes to trees or comes to water conservation, I usually side with the Democrats on the council. And so I really see that with all my colleagues is you really never know how somebody's going to vote unless it's a, just a very clear line partisan issue, which there are very few of those that come up with the city council.
Who, who was the Libertarian that you?
The mayor. Yep.
The mayor. Does the mayor vote on all decisions or just if it's a tie?
She votes on all decisions. So there's, without getting into a lot of detail, because this could be like a four hour podcast talking about different levels of local government. We have what's called a manager form of government. And so really the city council acts as the board of directors to direct, we have one staffer that we can hire or fire, and that's the city manager. And the mayor is just one of seven in that process. So she has no more authority, no more responsibility. Hers is statutorily a full-time or a full-time position. Statutorily, ours is part-time, though none of us do it part-time. That's one. Um, in addition, she's often much more the spokesperson for the city. So she's going out there and talking about.
Kissing babies.
Yeah, she's, she's going out to every event. And the manager manages the day to day operations of the city. So that's our form of government. We are one of the first cities in the country to establish a manager form of government. Let's say you go to New York City. New York City has a strong mayor system. The mayor appoints, um, the police chief, the fire chief, a lot of department heads. And they usually run the operations of city. They act as the manager of the city. The council acts as a legislative body. Then in a lot of smaller cities across the country, you have what's called a weak mayor system where the mayor only accesses a tie breaking vote or they really have no other authority. A lot of them aren't paid and most municipalities that are smaller than Wichita.
Damn. Hmm. That's cool.
And, and sometimes for the public, I don't think the public understands our form of government because I, I teach American politics. There is no student walking in that understands the level of government that Wichita has. Because it's hard to communicate because it's not what people's perception is. When you talk about a mayor, people's perception is the mayor either runs the city or has veto authority or has more control or authority. I think the only, the mayor's only additional responsibilities to the council is she can call a special meeting unilaterally. And then she can also, um, establish a particular boards and committees that are just committees for the mayor. Those are the only other two statutory obligations or responsibilities that she might have.
I didn't even know the mayor could vote.
Yeah.
Didn't, didn't know that.
And often, um, the mayor is, we've had a lot of votes that are, I mean, we have, most of our votes are seven to oh. There are a lot of contractual obligations, but the mayor can also swing on different issues. She'll side with the Democrat block on issues, she'll side with the Republican block on issues. And I think that's healthy. Like when we examine and we don't fit any to narrative or any box. Um, I believe, don't quote me on this, though we're on a podcast, so I guess it is a quote, that she's the highest ranking Libertarian in the country, um, right now.
Oh, no kidding.
And I know at least from an executive role, she is, I mean, a mayor of the 40th largest city of the country. And it's unusual for someone to run as a Libertarian and win. Usually if somebody serves as a Libertarian or an independent, they'll be established as part of a party when they first get elected. And then they may choose a different route. For her to be able to run as a Libertarian is pretty unusual across most races of the country.
I like how available she is, you know? I went to the TBT, the aftershocks.
Oh, yeah.
Multiple games.
Go shocks.
She's always, yeah, how fun was that?
It was fantastic. I didn't go to the championship game. I went to one of the playoff game.
So it's a semis.
Semis. I forgot which one I went to, but it was electrifying. Like I guess I enjoyed it far more than just regular college baseball. I don't know why, but it was very different. So.
It's Sunday. Um, there was probably 10,000 people there.
Wow.
It was about, about max. There was a few empty seats, but not many. And, um.
And they won.
Yeah, and they won. They looked great. They had a great team. And Taylor said, Eldridge, we had Taylor Eldridge in here not too long ago. He said that that was the biggest crowd since the pandemic.
That's incredible.
Yeah.
I mean, when I went to Wichita State back in 2013 to 2017, that was like the height of like basketball. We were just off the sweet six or just off the final four, then we came back to the sweet 16 and I was there. So all the games are electrifying then. It's not as much that anymore. So hopefully this brings back energy, just to shockers in general and makes people, I mean, we have to support the hometown team and obviously, uh, the alumni did really well.
Yeah, they did.
Just shows you, if you put a winning product out there, Wichita will come back.
Yes. And we want to invest, like Wichita wants amenities. Like we want to go out there and do activities. And the shockers game, every single time I go, I've never been disappointed. Sometimes I just forget to go out in off seasons when maybe we're not doing so hot, but I, more people need to go out to. I was actually with, uh, Pete, it was me, Lily and Pete went out to the aftershocks game during one of the semifinals. And they're two of the biggest shocker fans and, uh, especially Pete.
Yeah, he's a Wichita.
I was worried a lot about, a lot about all the players when I was there.
Pete knows his stuff.
Yeah, he does. He does. He was great in here too. And we've been going to W C games with him forever.
Yeah.
So it was great to see Charles Coke like that again. And I hope that, like you said, this will kind of rejuvenate the city. So.
It's a fantastic stadium, like or an arena. It's, uh, so easy to get into. Every seat is a good seat. I remember going, there was a student. I think a lot of the student traditions may have been lost. I don't think they rip up paper anymore. I remember that when I was.
It'll all come back if they get good. It'll all come back. I'm not, not worried about it. They just gotta get good enough.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. Um, there's a few, at least it seems, to what I know, there's a few hot issues.
Let's get started.
Yeah. I want to ask you about the downtown parking.
See, I should just like get up and walk away.
Seems to be, like the Facebook comments, that seems to be the topic of discussion.
There's one thing that the council should have done with downtown parking is we should have probably continued the plan at the start. Now, we did get more public input, but it's been the issue that never dies.
Did it start, did it start July of this year? Is that right?
It did, yes.
Okay.
The city's being lenient. Um, they're trying to get people just to get used to the system. But it was originally, everything in government moves slow. Everything in local government moves incredibly slow. So the original, uh, parking was passed, uh, the week before I, uh, came to the city council. So we've been having this conversation for more than a year and a half with different alterations, with different changes, with different maps, with how do we exclude, uh, different areas of the city? So originally, um, the parking proposal included Old Town, Downtown, Delano universally. That was pulled off. I had deep concerns. I represent Delano district. I had very deep concerns that Delano is different than an Old Town or a Downtown. We have no, um, large parking lots right now. We're building the multimodal hub in Delano. So we will have a parking garage, but we don't right now. So we only have on-street parking. And we're a lot of small businesses that people come in, they leave. And so we were able to exclude Delano from the final product. Downtown, it's being implemented right now. And then Old Town, ask me in a couple of months what we're going to do with Old Town because that changes all the time. Right now, the Old Town Business Association is applying for CID. We don't get the nuance of what that is. If they don't get that application, they'll also have meters in Old Town. And so it's still this staggering process, but I used the pay parking today. I wasn't necessarily a huge fan, but it was fine.
What's the cutoff between downtown and Old Town?
Uh, Washington, no, the, um, the railroad, uh, would be the cutoff. Um, and then from the railroad to Washington would be considered the Old Town district. That's basically the boundaries. Downtown is considered from Kellogg to Second Street, from basically the railroad tracks to the river. And then Delano is what people perceive as Delano.
Gosh, just the west, west side of.
Yeah, just the west side of the river.
What's the, what's the annual projection? Is it a million and a half?
Right now, while we're establishing, uh, the meters, we're going to be having a lot of upfront costs.
I thought I saw that somewhere.
In, once we stabilize the reserves, we just want it to pay for the costs and upkeep and maintenance of the parking. And I agree with this premise is that there is no such thing as paid park or free parking. If you are parking previously in downtown Wichita, your tax dollars are using or being used to maintain that parking. And so right now, this is creating more of a user system of users of the system are paying for the system. For example, a 90-year-old woman in southwest Wichita is probably rarely going downtown. But previously, her tax dollars were being used to pay for people to park downtown and to maintain the lots downtown, to maintain the garages downtown. And so you may not see that cost, but it's being passed through in your property tax dollars because the maintenance is still required to be there. So really the move to paid parking is more of a user model. Um, where if you're using the system, you're paying for the system, but people don't like change. And it's difficult to have a process of change. And so right now, our staggered approach is really Down Douglas. Uh, we've added a few more streets this past week and will continue to add more and more and start really enforcement as we move through August. Now that we've given people the ability to download the app, to figure out how to use the system. Uh, just this week, we started, um, also paying for or establishing meters at all of our lots. And so that was excluded previously. So now all of the city-owned lots will have paid meters as well.
What was the process of getting all the, I assume they'd have to update meters and put in new ones. What was the process? Did they, did the city contract that out to, um, did I assume somebody?
Yeah, we have a contractor's car park is who we're using to establish it. The city isn't an expertise in how do we use, you know, meters? And so we're, we purchase them through a third party. Uh, they're the ones managing the system. I had concerns originally and I think a lot of my concerns were answered as, you know, do these individuals have training in constitutionality because they're enforcing the law? And so we're having private individuals and private companies enforcing the law of the city. And I want to make sure that they also understand that individuals have rights in the process as well. I also wanted to make sure that there, we didn't create a model that profitability was driven from the number of tickets they received. And so they don't get a proceeds or percentage from the tickets. And so violations don't incentivize them to ticket more people. Uh, because I feel government shouldn't be incentivized to ticket people to cover gaps and to make proceeds. And so, uh, they have a, they have a rate that they're being charged and they're, they're not making me off tickets. And so I did have a lot of concerns when this came before us last June, I voted against it. Were able to reach a compromise, um, and that I voted for the compromise to be implement, uh, some of the paid parking. And I think the compromise is hopefully moving us in the right direction. That's what a lot of this role is, is I can't get my way all the time, which is a good thing. And my colleagues can't get their way all the time, which is a good thing.
Sure. And I could see the concern, um, especially being a company, maybe not from here. I can see that being a concern from, for citizens.
Yeah.
I'm sure you guys did your due diligence though.
Yeah, it's an out of state company. Uh, they have a lot of, um, history in the industry. There's really nobody in Wichita that specializes in it right now. And so a lot of what we do, I mean, the city is a 3,000-person corporation. And, you know, we have a lot of expertise in the city. We don't have an expertise in everything. And so there are times that we need to contract things out. Do I think we contract too many things out? Yes. I think there are probably more things that we could do in-house. But for something that requires a unique expertise, it's probably outside of our communities where we can find a lot of those answers. But I also want to make sure that it's competitive and that we have a bid process that isn't just giving a one bid or the lowest bid. The lowest bid may not always be the best bid. So how do we make sure that we're maintaining that and before every council meeting? It's the most boring part of the council meeting for the general public, but it's when we approve bids and contracts. And so any contracts over 50,000 has to come before the city council and we either vote it up or vote it down. And it goes through procurement process. It goes through, um, really, um, all of staff and the experts looking at it. And there have been times where we've rejected bids. There have been times that I voted against bids, uh, because I didn't feel that it was the best use of taxpayer dollars.
When you said that the downtown parking is going to be now a user tax, is the tax that was keeping all that afloat, you know, that someone not ever going to downtown paying tax? Is that going away or is that getting reallocated or? Cause I think that's people's fear is when, you know, when you start a tax, it just, it's done now. It's never stopping, you know, it's only going to increase in this situation. Is that, are those funds just getting reallocated or?
It's a great question. A lot of the funds, we have a lot of outstanding maintenance, first off, for our parking fee. We have more than $18 million in outstanding maintenance for garages that haven't been invested in previously. For example, we had the auditor, uh, audit all of our parking agreements. What's incredibly frustrating about this is that the city lost $13 million since 1994. The year I was born was the last time that the city escalated parking fees for businesses in downtown Wichita and Old Town. And so for nearly 30 years, we had no escalation of fees, though prices have increased in every other industry and every other market, our parking did not. And so that was a failure of city leadership really over the course of 30 years that we're paying for now. So the answer is no, because a lot of it has to be reinvested. But I do think we have to be better stewards of taxpayer dollars. And so this previous budget cycle or in the middle of the budget cycle right now, uh, we were able to vote for the first, uh, decrease in the mill levy, which is your property tax mill levy, the first property tax decrease in more than 30 years. And so we're trying to move in the right direction. It was more symbolic than anything because we were only able to decrease at point five. But that's still taxpayer dollars that we're able to return back to the taxpayer for the first time in 30 years. And so I'm hoping that there's other opportunities to continue to figure out a way to reduce the property tax burden on people because we're literally taxing people out of their homes and especially older Wichitaans that have paid off their home that are on fixed incomes. And every year they see an 8% increase in municipal government. They're probably seeing 8% increase in county government and school, uh, the school district as well. Meanwhile, the private sector only grows by, you know, 4%. And so right now, the public sector has been growing at a rate faster than the private sector. And I think we have to, I know that we have to turn that ship and that we should be growing at the same, if not figuring out ways to have more efficiencies and reduce the burden on taxpayers.
Hey, you're sharp.
I have read, I'm in the middle of budget season right now. And so most of my life is reading the city budget and engaging in the city budget. The city budget is about $780 million, um, every year when you include all of our portfolio, it's about a billion dollars. And then we have our capital improvement plan, which is $3 billion. So those are all the large investments that we make over the next 10 years. So in about two weeks, we'll be voting on about $4 billion. So most of my life right now is reading a stack of papers about that large and trying to find efficiencies. Um, and that's what we have to do is people expect government to be efficient. They want a government where when they call the fire department, they know the fire department's going to show up. They want to drive down a road where their road is maintained. They want to turn on their faucet and be able to have clean water. What they get pissed about and what I get pissed about is when we spend $500,000 on two porta potties in downtown Wichita. And so when people see that, they lose trust in some level of government. And so we have to make sure we're being good stewards on every single vote because people see those things and it frustrates them on, you know, a porta potty is $250,000 when that's above the average price of a Wichita home. And people see that, that's a real thing. And how do we make sure that we're, that people are trusting us when we have these votes? And so every vote matters.
How does something like that happen?
It's a good question. Uh, it was before I was on the council. Uh, the city council went out to a bid to be able to establish two portable restrooms and hydration stations, which as a runner, I know you guys are runners, I want a hydration station when I run downtown. I would prefer we just turn on the city fountains that are currently off. Because I don't think any of the current city fountains work when I go and use them. So that would have been my number one thing. Instead, we established two new ones, one at, um, A Price Water Park, which is near the river, and then one at Nafsker Park. And we went out to bid and the bids that came back out of the people that applied, the bid that was approved by the council was 250 to 300,000, once you include install per, uh, basically elevated porta potty. Um, and so I rejected that bid, voted against the bid. It still moved forward. And so they're established over at Nafsker. I'm glad that they're there. But I think that we could have spent taxpayer monies better or taxpayer money better, maybe went out to another bid and tried to see if there's a local opportunity. These are the Portland Lou's. It's a company out of Portland. There's a lot of things that I don't want to model the city of Wichita after, and that's probably Portland, Oregon.
I think a lot of people would agree with you on that.
Yes. I, uh, when you, when a city has like, I don't, I forgot if it's Portland or San Francisco. One of the cities had like a poop map where you could like track where people were publicly defecating. The city has that. They have a lot more problems they should be worrying about.
Yeah, you hear that with San Francisco. I'm sure Portland's same.
Oh, I just got back from Seattle this past weekend and I'm very glad I live in Wichita.
I've never been there. It's a shit, that's a shame, you know, because the natural beauty of that area is just shocking.
Yeah, it's like the second you get out of Seattle, like we went to go hikes and falls. It's stunning. It's incredible. Um, but when you get into the city, I, I think I saw a man, um, he had a pigeon eating out of his mouth.
No.
Yeah, it's a, I don't want to bring those things to Wichita. So.
What's your philosophy like this downtown parking deal? When you know that the city, a lot of the city is going to disagree and push back? What's your philosophy? When you believe something is good, truly? How do you get your message out to people to try to change minds?
I think you have to clearly communicate and put it into real terms for people. People have busy lives. They shouldn't care about what happens at city hall every day. Like what we do every day should not affect their lives because they should not even see us. Their lives should be maintained because we have clean water, roads and infrastructure. And so when I go out to individuals and I try to talk, it's a lot of communication of telling people, hey, you're already paying for this. Cause a lot of people don't understand that. They don't understand that the cost of maintenance of lots and the cost of maintenance of especially parking facilities and parking garages. And so 90% of the battle is communicate. You're not going to convince everybody even at that and say, hey, we may disagree on this, but you're probably going to agree with me 90% of the time on something else. And so how do we create an environment where there's room for discomfort and disagreement? So much of American politics is, um, I wouldn't say cult, I'm a cult-like mentality where you have to agree with me 100% of the time. I, if I agree 100% of the time, I am in a cult. And so I don't want to agree with somebody 100% of the time. I want somebody to challenge me. And I have had my mind, uh, changed at the bench for my colleagues. I've had the mind, my mind changed from people in the community when I talked to them. And I think that's how you get a better product, the more people you engage. Just yesterday, we had a primary in the city of Wichita. It had 6.6% turnout, uh, which is incredibly low.
Wow.
Even in presidential race, you know, let's say you're at 60% or upwards, depending on what year it is. But 6.6% of individuals voted to turn out in the primary election yesterday to choose who affects their life on a daily basis, who affects their water bills, their property tax bills. The federal government doesn't affect your property tax bills. They're not the one increasing your water rates. It's the city of Wichita doing that. And so trying to tell people that local government does matter. And not that it just doesn't matter, but like you can actively engage with any of us. Like every single one of my colleagues will answer their phone if somebody calls them. You call the congressman, that's not going to happen just because the sheer scale of it. And so you can actually have an impact on local government. And if you bring an idea, I may not agree with all your ideas, but maybe I agree with one. And we figure out a way to improve a system or a process in the government as well.
How was trying to explain or work with lo- local businesses downtown about the parking increase? I bet they raised concerns probably about potentially them thinking it would, customers wouldn't come down as often. How was, how was, uh, working with that?
Really, I would say each of the districts, uh, behaved very differently. So there's the, let's classify the Old Town district, which is where you go to the bars. Downtown district, which is Down Douglas, you know, near where the ambassador is, and then Delano. All three of the districts behaved very differently in the process. The downtown district, which is a part of a self-improvement district, actually endorsed the downtown parking plan. They were the ones leading the conversation because they believed that it had great walkability. So in terms of the downtown core, I saw no opposition from businesses. Businesses were actually the ones lobbying us to implement downtown parking. When you go to Old Town, they're currently in the process of, we don't want meters. We understand we have to pay for parking. So we have a lot of surface level lots. So how can we create a situation where somebody doesn't have to put coins in right now? When you go to, let's say, uh, River City downtown, you're paying for it in your food. You just don't see it. Um, because they have some parking agreements right now where they're paying the city. I'll write not enough in a lot of the agreements, not calling out River City, but some of the developers in there are not paying the fair market value. But they are still paying something and you, there, I guarantee you offsetting you when you go and eat at River City. So Old Town has been interesting in that they're trying to create a, a CID, which is basically a 2% tax that'll go on all your bills that you'll be able to see at the bottom, but it'll be like a parking fee. So you'll still pay for it, but you'll pay for it when you go to eat. So they've been engaging differently in the process. And the Delano Business Association, which is the one I interacted the most with, because that's where I represent, were in firm opposition and they lobbied very much in opposition. And so I really think we've actually done a pretty good job at working with each business segment in what they wanted and what they thought they worked for their area. Um, and so I'm actually proud that we were able to create really three distinct districts instead of the original plan, which was creating everything as like a, you know, utarian or utilitarian, uh, area. And that we really segmented out, hey, what works for this particular area? Because Delano is very different than Old Town and Old Town's very different than downtown. And so I'm glad that we were able to take that into consideration. I do think that most businesses, um, were involved in the process and were probably heard in the process.
Well, that's good input on that. Um, yeah, we'll just have to see how that plays out.
Uh, we'll have to see how it plays out. So I, uh, I get texts every once in a while. But I, I do think the system, like I use the app today to go to like downtown Starbucks. I'm like, yeah, I don't want to pay an additional. I think I paid a dollar for parking. I don't want to do that, but I understand that hopefully if we maintain the system now in the future, colleagues that follow after me could reduce the property tax burden on individuals. And really I think that's the larger conversation that we have to have as a community. And is that property tax is not the maintain, way to maintain most levels of government. Wichita is the largest city in, oh, obviously the largest city, but we're the only city in the state that does not have a municipal sales tax. And when you have 30% of, we're losing 30% revenue capture of people coming and spending money in the Wichita. In Wichita, they're using our service, they're using our roads, they're using our infrastructure. But yeah, they're not paying into it right now. And so I think the city should look at a sales tax initiative and couple that with a property tax reduction. Is if we increase your sales tax, we will reduce your property tax. And that way it's a consumption-based model for individuals of if they don't want to pay the sales tax, then they're going to purchase less things. And that way it's a consumption based model for individuals of if they don't want to pay the sales tax, then they're going to purchase less things or they can have more ability. To determine their purchasing power and where they want to purchase something. So I think long term, we have to move to that model of taxation. And try to reduce the burden on property taxes for individuals.
That's a good idea.
So hopefully I, I want to get it on the ballot uh, in the spring. Um, I'm trying to lead the conversation. Well, actually, you guys are breaking news. I'm going to be leading that conversation on uh, Thursday, uh, so tomorrow evening at the city council meeting. And proposing that we put a sales tax initiative on the ballot. And what I also like about it is the public says yes or no. It's not a vote at the bench. We cannot implement a sales tax. It has to be the public choosing to do it. And I would also couple that with a requirement that if we reduce the sales tax by ordinance, the second that takes place, your property taxes would see a reduction of about six mils. For an average family, I mean, it's speculative, but for an average family, you're maybe saving two hundred dollars in your property taxes a year. And I think that would be sizable for a lot of families in our community that are right at the brink and a lot of people on fixed incomes.
Tomorrow night, you're bringing the hammer.
Tomorrow night, tomorrow night. We have four evening city council meetings a year to try to engage people differently. So usually our meetings are Tuesday morning, but. Most Wichitaans cannot show up to city council meeting at Tuesdays at nine AM. And so the mayor implemented this year, she established four evening meetings. And so this is our third evening meeting of the year and then we'll have one more. And this one's solely about the budget. And so trying to get more public input on it and more engagement. Um, and that's really the hard part of this job is how do you engage people? What is the cost per head of engagement? How do you make people care? And how do you get people involved? And I'm open to any suggestions on that.
I really like the transparency with our local government now. I don't know if that's just me getting older and paying more attention now, or if there's. None with the national government.
That too.
None.
That too. And if you do, it's just fighting most of the time. It's never anything productive.
Nothing productive, man.
God, no.
Just everybody falls in line. You're either on one side of the aisle or the other.
Yeah.
And nothing gets done. I don't know, sometimes a two party system makes me pull my hair out.
Oh, I agree. I, I don't know if the parliamentary system is the right way to go, but we have to at least figure out a way to build more consensus with individuals. And like engage more individuals and most ideas are not going to be, most good ideas are not going to be on the far right of the spectrum or far left of the spectrum. They're going to be somewhere in the middle. They're going to come as a result of compromise and compromise is messy and it's frustrating. Um, but that's how good governance happens.
Right.
Um, and I think you can really only do that right now at the local level. And hopefully the local level models that at the national level or even at the state level, like slowly increasing and restoring some trust in government.
I'm hoping, and it's probably not going to happen, but like our generation, I'm hoping that we just see the complete shit show. That's gone on with our parents' generation and the generation, you know, probably right before him that's turned, turned into this, that we see this and it's like, okay. You know, if we want to still be a country, we got to take this seriously and compromise. It cannot be just red line stuff or you get what we've got right now.
Yeah, and unfortunately, America has only come together in moments of tragedy.
In war.
Yeah, that's moments of tragedy, war are the only times that we unite as people. We have to figure out a way to do that. Covid could have been an opportunity for us to come together and I think it created far more division. And it was really the first time that a large national tragedy created more division instead of figuring a way to have unity in the situation. And so I don't know the solution to that. I know that the solution, at least locally, is talking to people that disagree with you. And uh, when I go door knock, most people I interact with are not hyper partisan. They just want good government. And again, they don't have to think about government. They want to care about their family. They want to just go and turn on TV and not just watch the world spiraling, spiraling every day. And honestly, a lot of it's, I don't say overblown, but so much of media is fed into, if it, if it bleeds, it reads. And so there's an economic incentive for newspapers, for TV stations, for radio stations to broadcast the worst. And that's why I'm glad that you guys are having a podcast, independent podcast, because independent podcasts are where you can have real conversations with people. It creates an environment that isn't just a soundbite environment, because our soundbite environment is what's incredibly dangerous. And I think that's the one challenge of our generation is that so much of what we consume is in such quick soundbite. So I try these minute long recaps after every city council meeting to engage people. Because that's about the entire attention span of most individuals is a minute. And I think you can get a lot of information in a minute. But podcasts like this is where you can do a deep dive on issues affecting their community and how do you make change? And also maybe heal a lot of um, challenges we have.
I think our age group is going to kill cable news.
Oh.
Cable news is going to be dead.
I don't know the last time I've turned on TV uh, to be able to watch. And then what I find interesting is we, again, just had an election. I didn't see any ca- now, I'm not in the district, but I didn't see any news about it because I don't watch cable news. And so I saw very little engagement. We had to figure out to, a way to go to where people are. We can't expect people to go to city Wichita website. We can't expect people to go to, most people don't even know, we have a city uh, TV station, City Seven. Most people have no clue.
I didn't know that.
And I think it's an outdated model of interacting with people, like how do we engage people with YouTube? How do we engage people unfortunately with TikTok? I had maybe some concerns about the Chinese Communist Party and TikTok, but how do we engage people TikTok usage? How do we engage people on Instagram? How to engage people on Twitter? We have to go to where people are because people aren't coming to where we are.
Right. TikTok's our best, best place to get hate comments though.
Is it? I need, I need to check out TikTok. I haven't succumbed and downloaded it. I've held off as long as I can. But I think if I want to engage with people better, I'm going to have to download TikTok and have to engage in TikTok in some way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's interesting. I hadn't got it till we started this. And yeah, it's, it's a wild place.
Well, uh, you know, on the internet, we get this all the time, especially in elected office, is you get so much hate. And usually it's from people that have no real profile photo. Usually it's like a cat or like, you know, maybe a dog in the profile photo. And usually if it's a cat or dog in the profile photo, they're the meanest people. Like it's not the people that have a face and have a name with it. It's some bot or some individual sitting in their basement that is just jaded about everything in the world. And they just want to complain.
It's miserable people.
Yes, and there's, there's a lot of those, but there's a lot more good people. I truly believe that.
What's your favorite platform to use to put something out?
To get good engagement is probably LinkedIn for me.
Ah.
Um, to get good engagement. Now, that doesn't engage young people all that much though. More young people use LinkedIn than I expect, um, because I have a lot of engagement. But that's where I feel like you can have genuinely real conversations where people aren't just trying to play into maybe national rhetoric or national politics. Facebook is fine to post things. I don't, my Instagram is my private Instagram. I don't post anything political on my Instagram. So I really say LinkedIn and Facebook are where I share content the most. What I found to be beneficial is uh, last year I had a town hall by Auburn Hills and I had five people show up. It was my first year. We were trying to engage, but we just posted on the city website. I posted it on social medias, five people engaged. This shows that we have to have more engagement, more opportunity. And so I tried uh, sending out a mailer. So we sent out a mailer to everybody that lived in Auburn Hills and I was skeptical that mail was going to work. But I had eighty-five people that showed up this year. Um, and so we had far more engagement. Now, it was about a particular project in their neighborhood, Maple Street expansion. But it showed that people want to engage, like they want to have input and they want to be involved in the process. Most of the time they have no clue how to engage. If I go on the street and ask people when the next city council meeting is, no one is going to know. And should they know? Probably not, but they should know how to get ahold of us and how to reach out to us if there's an issue that they care about.
It's great that other platforms are coming about like podcasting. You know, looking back on it, obviously you see it now with long form content being the way to go. Looking back on the how like Fox News, CNN, MSNBC, how they all work, it's such a dumb concept of ten minute segments. And then right, you could be like halfway through explaining something and the anchor is like, oh, we got to go to break.
So no substance.
So some pharmaceutical company gets their, gets their ad in, in time where there's a million different side effects.
Do those even work? I, I like consider that. I, there's never ti- there's never one time I've walked in my doctor and been like, I saw this on TV. But like, somebody has to do that. Like somebody has to see us on TV for the amount of ads on cable news to be pharmaceutical. And like pill pushing ads.
That's all it is.
It's all it is.
It's an embarrassment. It's an embarrassment of our country.
We're like.
That's, that's what's funding our news. What is it? Us and New Zealand are the only two countries that can actually advertise that stuff on TV? It's banned in all the other countries, I'm pretty sure.
People have to go and take that to the doctor, but that's never something I've considered. Like, ah, that was a great ad and I'm going to go, go to my doctor and tell them I want to get on that. And that's not the how, boy.
They wouldn't be doing it.
You're right. That's not the way you should consider your health. But the long form podcasts like this are how you could do like deep dives and conversations and questions. Like I couldn't synthesize and talk about the council manager reform of government on a cable news network. Cause you're looking for, you maybe have a minute after questions of how do you get this particular soundbite? Even when you do T- TV interviews locally, I'll be like, hey, what is the one thing that I want to be taken out of this interview? And so you give a lot more control to people in elected office or people in positions of power. Because they're coming to the table with, hey, I'm just going to repeat this line over and over and they're going to have to carry that. When conversations like this, you can ask the tough questions and I'm going to have to figure out a way to answer them or walk out of the room. Like I have to engage in some way that in cable news, I'm like, oh, I could just keep repeating the same thing until commercial break and then I'm going to be fine.
And there's so much interruption because of the time constraint too. People are just jumping on top of each other, trying to get, trying to say stuff. So yeah, this is definitely the way to go.
Well, and podcast is interesting because it's uh, we talked about our generation in particular is a soundbite generation. We are, but they also are the podcast generation and they want deep dives into information too. And so maybe the soundbite gets people to the podcast. But I wake up every morning, I listen to, I mean, usually I listen to like a morbid or like a serial killer podcast, which is probably not the best way to start a morning, but it's fascinating. Like people want to get new content and like do these deep dives. And there's just not that many opportunities except for a lot of young people doing podcasts.
And look what it's done to people like Megyn Kelly and Tucker. They got their own podcasts and they are huge now.
Oh, it's.
They're probably making more than they ever made on Fox.
There is no question. They're making more money on podcasting than when they did on Fox. And they have more control autonomy. They don't have some bureaucrat. Telling them what they should report on that day. These are your news. Like you have so much more independence in podcasting. The one challenge is how do you verify the validity and truth of podcasting? And how do you make sure? Because there's no check on that. Theoretically, most cable news should have some check on news and factual information. That's tough.
There's not.
There's not. Theoretically, there should be, but podcasting, you, you can challenge people more. And I think that's where you get the truth is, hey, that didn't sound right. I'm going to challenge you. Or I'm going to respond in a long form and tell you while you're wrong. Um, and I think you just have more in-depth conversations. People want depth, like they want community. They want depth. And they just need to know where to find it.
Remember when CNN dr. Joe Rogan's video, when Joe Rogan said he got Covid, they doctored his video to make him look sicker.
I did not know that. But I'm not surprised because again, if it bleeds, it reads. And like they have an economic incentive to be able to polarize the country. And that is the economic model of most major um, media outlets right now.
It's a nasty business, man. It is, because you know, if you're wrong, I don't even care. If you genuinely believe, genuinely believe in something and you're just wrong, fine, great. But it's the deception of a lot of the national news that, you know, it's, it's our generation not being on TV, but that, the deception is also what's going to bury them.
See for me, it's, you know, when I'm having conversations with people, it's like, I'm fine if you disagree ideologically, like challenge me on it, but don't dispute false information. Even if you believe, let's say it's, it's because people don't know what to believe. They don't know where truth is. They don't know what truth is. I think that's actually the larger overarching question is what is truth? Is truth a set of beliefs or is truth arbitrary for every individual? And that's really the question I think of our generation is how do you define truth? How do you engage with that? Because if there's not a set truth and everybody can have their own truth, then you can't have a function in society. Like our system is built on people trusting in good faith that there's a truth and we can maybe disagree on how to get to that, how to change that. But if we disagree on what the truth is, you can't have a function in society long term.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Yeah, it's just, I don't know, the national news, it's dying and it's going to continue to die, which is good. It needs to die. I wanted to um, segue back locally. Um, we were talking before this, Wichita is modernizing. The Delano open container. Then tell us about that. That is cool.
I'm excited. I uh, have been leading this initiative really for, I brought it up in January from the city council. So I got the idea from Topeka. So Topeka has two common consumption areas. Now, there's a lot of communities across the country as common consumption areas. But if it works in Topeka, I was confident it could work in Wichita. And I met with a lot of um, businesses in Pika, talked to people on the street. And nobody had any challenges. And so I started the initial conversation in February and government moved slow. So we were able to bring an ordinance uh, before the city council in the end of June. And now city staff, that was passed a seven to O vote. Now city staff is working with businesses in Delano to sign up to be part of the common consumption area. So I just found out, again, breaking news on your podcast, uh, and this is why local government matters. August nineteenth city council meeting is when we're going to be voting on the boundaries of the common consumption area and actually implementation. So the set um, goal is to open the common consumption area by the first week in September. And you'll have a few more games, uh, really falls the best time in Wichita.
Perfect for football season.
It is perfect for football season. You could walk from the Monarch, you can go to Wichita Brewing Company, you can get under the pennant. And I really think this is going to spur more development in the area. Um, what I think was the most exciting conversation I had and it was. An upsetting conversation, but I think it has so much potential is one of my favorite places in Delano was Al Zavino uh, wine bar. And they closed about two years ago. They've opened a mercantile. And the owner told me when I met with her about the common consumption area is if this would have been in effect, when we had Al Zavino, maybe we could have stayed in business. And I hope that this spurs more people to open their businesses and bring. You know, that type of environment and nightlife to Delano. It's going to be very different than Old Town. We don't want the wild environment you see in Old Town till two AM. The common consumption area in Delano right now, you know, through consultation and I think a compromise with the police chief, it's going to close. I think it was ten or eleven. I haven't seen the final um, ordinance, but that would push people back into the bars. And so people can hang out and then we're going to push you back in the bar. So then at twelve o'clock, the bars are going to shut down and then you have to go home. So it's going to be a very different environment than you're going to see in Old Town and I think that's a good thing. So right now the boundaries are going to be from Seneca to the river. Um, really down Douglas from alley to alley. And then we're also going to pull in the baseball stadium. What's incredibly exciting about comments, yeah, and so you can walk from Wichita Brewing Company to go watch a baseball game in the future.
Very cool.
What I think is going to be great in the future is the ordinance is established. So let's say a businesses opens right on the periphery of the common consumption area. If they're contiguous to the common consumption, com- common consumption area, they can apply to be joined into that. So it just doesn't limit development straight up and down Douglas. It creates this opportunity where businesses can also start growing out of that. And start uh, bringing um, more environment, more culture, more nightlife to the area. I was just, I just got back from um, again, Seattle. They had a common consumption area. It was a safe environment. I've been to Savannah, Georgia. They have a very safe environment. And so it works in other communities. And for me, there's not an excuse that it can't work in Wichita. We have to figure out a way to make it work because it's a different environment. Not that alcohol is end all be all. I don't want people to get crazy in the common consumption area, but walkability is important. And if I can walk from the pennant to the river and eventually walk down the river, hopefully the spurs development, maybe we have like riverboats down the river. That people can grab a drink and walk up and down the river and create this environment that is unique in this area.
That would be cool. Is this a, a larger strategy to kind of make Wichita? Get a little closer to a Kansas City type or a Denver type? Cause you know, Kansas City's got power and light. It would be so cool if Wichita could do, obviously not to something that size probably, but do something similar where you can, you know, have an open container and go, kind of go from bar to bar to bar.
Yeah, I want Wichita to be Wichita. And we have so much potential in this community, but often we do this half ass mentality where we say it's good enough for Wichita. Like we do a really good job of saying, oh, this is good enough for Wichita. But let's figure out something that uniquely can bring businesses that can help businesses. And it just creates another opportunity to be able to, for, for them to seek profitability. A lot of, especially restaurants are right on the margin. And so if we can create something where they can um, feel more secure, maybe they can invest more in live music outside of the Monarch. Maybe they can invest some more in live music on the patio of the Al Zavino wine bar. How do we bring more people to this area? And that builds community. Young people want community. Everybody wants community. And you know, you have a lonely epidemic in our country as well. Like how do you bring people to spaces that are joint spaces? Um, I think what's happening with Somewhere Fest is a good example of doing something for Wichita. It's a music festival that happens uh, every June. Um, well, it's happened two years now. Brought Steve Aoki last year.
Here locally?
Yes.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, last year they brought Steve Aoki, this year they brought Dead Mouse. Um, and it's really this incubation space for music uh, in downtown as well. And so investing in Wichita and making Wichita unique and how do we lean into our history as well? For example, Delano used to be the uh, saloon district. It was the Wild West.
Damn right.
Yeah, it was. That's why I live in Delano. I wanted something grungy. Like I don't want to live in College Hill. I don't want to live in Riverside, no offense, but I wanted to live in Delano. Because there's this unique grungy vibe of it. And you know, I, I remember being at my house. This is a side uh, story, but. Uh, my house is a hundred and five years old now. And I remember one time I walked in my basement and there's this like weird smell. It's like, where's this coming from? So I had a plumber come down, he walked downstairs and he's like, you have a hidden room down here. I was like, no, I don't. I've lived here for two years. And he's like, there is a room like right here. And so we found an entrance to it. And I have this massive cistern. So I'm creating this story that this master cistern is hidden because it was the bootlegging part of the city, which if you look historically, my house was built in nineteen twenty, which would have been aligned with that era. But you have a lot of history up and down like Delano. You have the Running of the Doves. Don't think we should bring that back necessarily. But how do we create this like culture? So there's a fart lex running group is looking at bringing um, I don't know, are either one of you familiar with Running the Doves?
No.
I'll give it PG.
So.
So uh, back in the saloon era, Wild West era of Wichita, the Running of the Doves was, there was, you know, prostitutes and brothels in Delano. And they would once a year run the prostitutes up and down the river as a part of a competition every year.
I did hear about that.
And uh, so fart lex uh, wants to bring back a, a period piece, clothed period piece. Uh, run where people can run up and down Delano to lean into this history. Like people want to be connected to something. And in America, we're such a new country, Wichita, we're such a new city comparatively. People want to be connected to history. And how do you connect to history without making sure people get wild or we have, you know, prostitution or wild saloon bar fights? But how do you lean into this environment that makes Delano different and very distinct district in our community?
Love it. Delano, yeah. Delano used to be its own town. I'm pretty sure. All the lawlessness of Wichita would go, would go to Delano.
You have to check out, if you haven't, there's a really good book. It's called Wicked Wichita. And it talks about the, really the grungy history of Wichita, but you would have to check your guns before you came to Wichita. So there's a checkpoint from Delano to Wichita, because Wichita was the civilized people and Delano were the cowboys in the Wild West. And you'd have to check your guns before you came across the river.
Wow, man.
Wyatt Earp was in Delano.
You had Wyatt Earp, you had, oh gosh, who was um? Is it Billy the Kid? Don't quote me on this. I think it might not. Billy the Kid, the good one, or maybe it's Wyatt Earp. I don't remember which one. One of their mothers, I forgot, some outlaw or not outlaw. He was um a uh famous person. This is a terrible story. Famous Wild West person. His mother was the only woman to sign the charter of Wichita. Um, back in eighteen seventy because she owned a laundromat in the area. And so uh we have one, uh her name's Catherine. I can't remember her last name, but she's the one person to sign uh the charter. There's a female in our community. We had, I think, two African Americans sign the charter of Wichita as well, which is very unusual, but they literally went up and down the streets. And Wichita every business. And if you owned a business, they tried to get you to sign it to incorporate Wichita as a community.
Wow. Can you find anything on that, Blake?
Yeah, find out who it is cuz I, it might have been Wyatt Earp, but it wasn't Billy the Kid.
I know we had John.
Oh, it was Billy the Kid. Okay, there you go. Billy the Kid, Catherine McCarty.
I did not know that. It's so funny with these historical things, how non-official everything was to get set up. Like that, you know, they're just taking this thing to down business road to get signatures on it. It's like, you know, we have these cities and whatever. And you think everything's so official, but that's not how it started.
It's not. And that's, I mean, honestly, that's how you make change. Now, if people come to city hall right now and I and they present. A petition with fifty signatures on it and it's from a neighborhood, we're probably going to listen. Like if you can get fifty of your neighbors to sign up to something and say, hey, we don't want this or we want this, we're probably going to listen in some way. So really we haven't changed, but it's a little bit more civilized. They're just walking up and door knocking and getting people to sign. Um, but when people come together in groups, people listen a lot of ways.
Delano does have a ton of history.
It does. You can walk up, um.
It's an awesome area.
It really is.
And it's it's growing so quickly. Like you have the ball stadium. I don't know if you've been recently. The city just invested twelve million dollars right along the. Um, West Bank, most of it's federal funds, but right along the West Bank to replicate kind of what you see outside of River Vista further um down and beautify the river. And so there's going to be a lot of engagement opportunities on the river.
Is that what's going on right now?
It is. That's why McLean's closed right now. And then there's a hotel development that's at McLean and Maple. That'll be a hotel right along the river. Um, we're looking at that um old church right there, the Metropolitan Baptist Church. It will will be a development project as well. The church is officially moved out. The building's been sold. We're just waiting on the demolition of the building and really the construction of that facility. And then you have the common consumption area coming to Leno. You have a lot of new businesses in Delano. And so there's, and then you have the ball stadium, like all of it ties together and creating this unique destination center for the community. And you look at, you know, communities like New York or some of my favorite communities in the country is you have like Greenwich Village, you have Hell's Kitchen, you have the Upper West Side, the Upper East Side, like. People like to go to districts. They like to, that's why you in Wichita, you have Riverside, College Hill, Delano are probably the three big. Destination centers because people want to go to these unique kind of micro communities within the community.
Right. When, is there a timeline of when that might be completed?
The Riverbank Development?
Yeah, all that stuff going on down there.
Probably I I did an artist walk with some of the artists doing projects earlier this week and so we're hoping. The entire project will be completed by fall of twenty six.
Cool.
Some of it will be established before then and probably some of it will be opened, but for the public, we're saying fall twenty six and hopefully we exceed expectations. Um, but right now the development seemingly uh moving pretty quick uh over on McLean.
Why is it, why are those federal funds? Just cuz the Arkansas River is a.
Arkansas River, there are some infrastructure projects as well uh to be able to do some infrastructure. Um, now we can get a whole nother podcast about how cities and counties are too reliant on federal funds and that we have to figure out a way to. Take more money from DC and bring it locally and actually not take money from DC, just not send as much money to DC. Have local governments control things because local government knows you the best. DC does not. And so how do we, instead of Wichita's taxpayer dollars, go into DC to then come back to Wichita on how much money is lost in that bureaucracy? How can we just make sure more money is invested locally? But while there are federal funds we can apply for, other communities are going to get them if we don't, and I think we should be actively applying for those federal funds and federal grants. Though a lot of that's changed um with the current administration, a lot of um the Doge projects, there is less money available to local governments. Long term, that's a good thing. There might be some growing pains in the middle of that though.
Gotcha. What else is going on? Those are the two hot topics. It seems like the common consumption and um.
What are some of the rebuttals that you respect on the common consumption deal? Because that's, and I'm sure I can speak for Jack, that's a slam dunk for us.
Yeah.
And you know, our friends and people like us. Have you heard anything? You're like, yeah, that's a, that's a pretty good point. I still lean this way, but.
A lot of overwhelmingly, I've heard a lot of positive feedback. Um, I would say it's, you know, a hundred to one in terms of positive feedback. The people that have opposition have opposition more or less to drinking as a whole.
Okay.
Um, I respect that. I disagree that government should be governing uh that uh a moral policy in that area. So I've heard that opposition. There's one business in particular. They haven't individually reached out to me, but I've seen them um share a few comments is. Uh, they were worried, you know, St. Patrick, somebody will walk in and spill a drink on their dress. Well, that's illegal now. They can exempt themselves from common consumption. And so no business on Delano has to um respect people coming in with alcohol. They can prohibit it still in their business and their establishment. And so I think that mitigates maybe the concerns there. Um, I do, uh, there are some concerns about, you know, there's Seneca Park there or there's schools. But I think those are far enough away, but overwhelmingly, I would say a lot of issues. I could give you probably a rebuttal um on a rebuttal I respect. There's just not that much opposition I've heard for it. Maybe um some pushback from the police department in terms of just uh manpower and making sure that we're not spread too thin, especially with. So much of our police force having to be at Old Town at two AM. Um, so that's why we're closing the common consumption area earlier that then we can still make sure that we have the manpower in Old Town when it's needed. So that might be one opposition I respect is making sure that we don't uh spread our officers too thin.
That's a good point. That's a good point because when you do go downtown, being out late. You know, there's some bad shit going on.
People can uh, nothing good happens at two AM. I feel really old saying that, but I think it is accurate. And so I. I'm the person that's going to embrace common consumption more and go to a bar. If I can go to bar with my friends and be like, hey, at eleven o'clock, we're out. Like I prefer that than being like, hey, we're going to stay out till two AM. Like I don't want to stay until two AM anymore.
Hangovers are worse at thirty than they were at twenty.
Far worse, far worse. And so I would prefer, you know, getting to bed by eleven and waking up and be able to run in the morning or doing something.
Right.
Instead of staying out till two AM.
Yes, you stay out till two AM. The next day is just a throwaway.
Oh, I can't run. Or sometimes I would just punish myself and run so that I know not to do it in the future. And then it works for a couple of months.
Yeah, that's not a bad thought. Punishing yourself for that.
Yeah.
Man.
It's a good way to get back in the swing of things, but no, there's a lot of good things happening in Wichita. There's a lot of momentum, especially in Delano. And I think there's more momentum when we realize that government isn't the answer. But government can create a lot of the problems. And so how do we create an environment where we're getting government out of the way? And we're letting businesses and enterprise thrive and just supporting them and helping them in that cause.
That's great. And I think that'll continue to get better as as our age gets into politics.
I hope so. Most people, I would say our age, and I don't want to speak for any, all three of you, but I would say most people are probably fiscally conservative. Fiscally conservative, socially moderate. Um, they want to make sure their money's spent well. They don't really care what anybody else does. Um, and they don't think government should be enforcing um their beliefs on individuals. And I think universally, it's most Americans. It's like, leave me alone and spend my money well and I'll be happy. Um, and I'm hoping, and I see that trend from, you know, moderate Democrats and moderate Republicans and also just, I would say Democrats and Republicans. Um, is how do we figure out those type of things and create an environment where. Um, every individual can feel valued and then every individual can thrive and then they can be merit based and that people can um live the life that they see fit.
I think just transparency is refreshing.
Super.
Super. I'm an open book, so you can ask me any of the tough questions and you know, I I would say that anybody that's listening to this podcast, if you. Disagree with me on something, challenge me. If you have a question about something, I will give you as much information. And if it's not publicly accessible information, I will make sure that staff gives you the information as well because we're we're with public dollars. And my job is to help make that process easier. Often people have to core request, core is the Kansas Open Records Act. They have to core request information. I'm like, just go through me. I'll make sure to get you the information as long as it's not confidential or risk security for our community. And so if there's something you want to know about local government and you can't find it, let me know and I'm going to help you find it.
That's great. That is great. Do you ever think of? And you don't need to necessarily answer this. Do you ever think of future? In politics down the road, like what's the next steps?
I promise you, this is not a political answer. I, politics is all about timing and opportunity. And both things have to collide. And sometimes if you force timing when there's not an opportunity. Um, there's a challenge or there might be an opportunity and the timing doesn't fit. And so for me, I'm open to continuing to serve my community, but both of these. The both of those things have to correlate. I also very much like my personal life. And I like not making, um, you know, be in the public face all the time. Like I like going out and not having people recognize me when I go out somewhere. And so I think that's something I have to take in consideration. I think you have to take that, you know, with, you know, future relationships. Like how does that all involve? Because it's not just a one-person decision. And so how do you make sure you're balancing all those things? So that's a. Political answer because I didn't give you a direct answer, but I am open to serving the community. I have no plans. I would not have expected to be in city council. I briefly served on the county commission and that opportunity opened itself like ten days before. And I just said yes, because I was at a place in my side that I could say yes. And so if there's an opportunity to serve my community and I think it makes sense and that I can offer something, I will say yes. But I don't want to force something because often you see a lot of people in politics that makes politics their identity. And when something's your identity. And it's contingent on people voting you up or down. If you lose, you lose part of your identity and I don't want to do that. And so I want to make sure to continue to have an identity outside of politics. Where this isn't where I found my worth. I find my worth in my relationship with God, my relationship with friends and family, hiking and running. And I don't want to sacrifice those things just for political power, political will.
How was? The election night when when you were running? What, take me through that evening. Was it? I don't even know. Was it contested? Was it close?
So primary, I was very fortunate. I ran a good campaign. In my background, I was Republican Party Chair previously, so I knew how to run a campaign and understood it. It was weird being a candidate, um, because it was my first time having kind of like the candidate jitters. So primary night, I was just worthless. Like I don't even know what I was like during the day I was worthless. I. I was expected to win by a large margin in my primary race. I won a fifty percent in a four-way race. And so primary night was. It would have been weird for me not to advance, just knowing the investment and knowing what my opponents did. And I still was nervous. And I still was um very jittery.
In primaries, you're just running against your own party.
Except in local races. So local races, because they're nonpartisan, um, it's just all people are in one race together. And then the top two will advance. So I could have advanced with a Republican. I did advance with a Democrat. And so her and I went to the general election. The general election, I still had jitters. Like I out fundraised her incredibly. Um, I door knocked more doors. I attended forums, she did not attend forums. So going into it, I saw, and my district was more uh conservative leaning. So I had an advantage going in, but you still didn't know what's going to happen. So I took a different strategy in the general. And I don't think I've ever said this publicly too, is I was like, you know, I could go get a massage or go, you know, just try to like ignore his election day. Nothing matters. Like I'm not going to convince anybody to vote. You don't know who's voting.
All the work's been done.
Nothing matters. If I'm, if I haven't won by election day, I haven't won the election. So instead, I was like, you know what? I want to feel a little pain. So I went to go get a tattoo. And uh, I, that's how I spent election day. I think I'm the only candidate to spend the election day in a tattoo chair. And so I showed up at maybe like ten and it's a full thigh tat. Like it is massive. And I was there from like ten to six. And by the end, I was like, okay, we got to wrap this up because I have an election night party to go to at seven. And what I didn't take in consideration was putting on a like suit over a tattoo. And so by nine o'clock that night, I could barely walk and I like. Came home in the night, looked at the tattoo and I thought I had a tattoo blowout and I was like, I messed up. And luckily it's all fine. It looked out great. That's how I spent my election night. I probably the only candidate to spend it at a tattoo parlor. Just to try to escape from everything because you're focusing on pain. You're not thinking about anything at that time. Time goes by really fast. So I might make that a tradition in some way.
Did you, okay. I was gonna say, where'd you have your election party?
My primary was at my house, um, because I I launched my campaign from my house. I launched from my front porch. I love having people over. Um, I think all my friends have a key to my house and I have like weekly dinners with my friends. So. I was like, you know what? I want to start my campaign in my house and so I want to end my primary at my house. Well, then it was. My house was not big enough really for the amount of people that came over the primary. So I went to Al Zavino actually, and that's where I had my election night party. It was great. It was a good turnout. My election was the first one called in the city. Um, I think we won with sixty-two percent of the vote. So it was a pretty large margin. Um, it was the first race called of the night and so then I got to go and everybody else's parties and just say hi afterward.
Oh, that's great.
I was gonna ask, how how late in the evening did it take till you knew you won?
I probably early votes, so ballots close at seven. I think I knew by. I knew early votes when they dropped that I had won. Um, just based on past political experience, you can usually judge if early votes are siding to the right. Uh, election day voters are more conservative. And so if a Republican wins or somebody that's conservative wins early votes, you're going to win the general election. So I knew the first drop that I'd won, but it's still the suspense until like they officially call it. Once I was at like fifty-eight percent, I was like, okay, I'm good. Um, and then I I think I gave a victory speech probably around like eight, um, and then took off and hopped around a couple of the other parties and.
Had to feel so good going to the other parties.
Oh, it was nice.
You've already.
It was nice. All the stress was gone. Like I'm like updating, you know, last night I was like, there's only three races that are contested races. And I still get, you know, the political high from it. Like I'm like updating the election website like every five minutes, but why aren't the results here? When you're a candidate, much worse. Like I just, I went to the back room um at Al Zavino and I was like, nobody bother me until at least the first drop happens. Like I have way too much like election night jitters. And so I just sat in the back and like refreshed and then one of my friends walked in and. His computer updated faster than mine. He was like, you won. I was like, great. Let me wait until there's more returns. Like I want to be more sure. I don't want to be the candidate that comes out there and says like, oh, I won. And then something switches at the end. So I waited till it was very sure of it.
Those campaign parties are a good time, man. We've uh, I guess I've only been to Pete's, but I remember when Pete ran the first time for the city. It was razor tight with, oh, I forget the name.
Yeah, he had a John, was it Johnny Stevens maybe ran? Or I forgot. That was back in twenty eleven, I think it was his first time.
Right, yeah.
That does sound right.
He, he, he won by, I think, just a handful of votes for some.
His was close.
And I don't think he was expect, like the other guy I think was expected to win, although I think it was expected to be close just because Pete was new.
Yeah.
I don't know if this guy, I don't know if this guy was new or not though.
There's a, that had a lot of people in that race um back in twenty eleven and a lot of open contested races. You see a lot more people jump in. Because it's easier to win a contested race and go against an incumbent. And so Pete's been secured every race since then. Um, you know, he had a county commission race. It was a little bit close, but his district's a little bit more blue, but yeah, he's, you know, the mayor of Dino's and so. All his votes at Dino's and he switched on.
Oh, here we go. Charlie Stevens. Wow, look at you.
I wonder what the prime, pull up the primary in that race.
Yeah, I think the primary was super tight.
Yeah, cuz those are the two that advanced. Um, yeah, primaries are interesting because then you have to figure out, you know.
I can't remember.
Even in mine, I I got fifty percent. I think my opponent, I don't know what it was. Let's say she got thirty percent in the primary. So that's a huge margin. But you don't know how the other candidate, you know, how the other people that voted for other candidates are going to swing. The other two candidates running against me were Republicans, so likely they were going to swing my way, but you can't guarantee that. Like is it just an opposition vote against me? Or is it a, they, you know, deeply believed in their candidate? And so you don't fully know the election. You can usually judge by the primary if it's a large margin, um, but you get anxiety every time. Now, let's see.
Not sure if this is it or not.
Uh, yeah, that's it.
District.
Oh, you're right. It was closer than I thought. Eight votes.
Eight votes.
Goodness.
He won by eight votes.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Oh, and the guy he ended up beating in the, in the general beat him in the primer.
See, that's an example. You don't know how people are going to come out and vote, but eight votes is wild to advance on the general. I didn't realize it was that close back then.
Yeah, I know it took uh, it took a couple of days.
Well.
Damn, thirteen ten to thirteen oh two.
Pretty amazing the lack of people that vote.
Yeah, I mean, what, that entire race, you probably had.
Forty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Five thousand maybe?
My, in my district, I represent seventy thousand.
Right.
And so how many people did not have their voice made? And you determined who the current, not even who the city council person was at that time. But then eventually, because he got elected to that office, it helped set him up for county commission and then be the chair of the county commission. So eight votes in that election. Determined who was chair of the county commission ten years later, because Pete would not have had that opportunity if it wasn't for winning that city council race.
Great point. Yeah, it's a great reminder and takeaway that voting in local elections really matter. They really matter because margins are razor razor thin.
They do matter. And I mean, you never know what somebody has the potential to do. Uh, I mean, not locally, but Mike Pompeo in twenty-ten was a business owner in Wichita. And by twenty sixteen, he was asked to be the director of central intelligence for the United States. And then became third in line to the presidency within a year after that. And so you have a small business owner Wichita within seven years is three heartbeats away from the presidency. And so you never know how one election is going to affect so much of international policy. And then you have, you know. Pompeo at that time when he was secretary, helping the Abrahamic Accords and a lot of international policy. And that's because he won an election in twenty-ten that had six candidates in a very close election. And if he would have lost that, he would have never had the opportunity to serve uh the country as secretary state. So elections do matter and primary elections do matter. And most people, I mean, it takes, I think I voted, when I voted, um, it took me five minutes, maybe. That was parking, walking in, voting, leaving, five minutes. Um, people should be able to take five minutes. I mean, they walk five minutes into Starbucks. You can walk five minutes into voting. And or you can mail in vote, like everybody can mail in vote now. Uh, you can advance vote. If you advance vote, it's quick and easy to get in there. Especially local elections. Federally, you might be waiting fifteen minutes, but local. Especially local elections. Federally, you might be waiting fifteen minutes, but local races, you are not gonna be waiting in a line.
Assuming if you are to run again, when, when would your turn be? When are you up for reelection?
Somebody asked that earlier today. I was like, I don't even wanna think about my election, um, and running again. Like, I think it's so.
Sorry to bring that up.
Yeah, no, you're, you're good. Uh, I, so I ran in twenty twenty-three. I was sworn in twenty twenty-four, so I would run in twenty twenty-seven again. Um, if I run again, and likely I will because I, I enjoy the job. I, um, like what I do and I think it's an opportunity and timing that I have to be. Now that could change in a year, but right now I'd have every intention to. And so that would be twenty twenty-seven. I would be theoretically sworn in twenty twenty-eight. Um, I like these elections every four years and they're staggered. So half the council's up, um. This year and then half the councils up in two years. I would hate what happens at the US Congress or even State House where every two years you're on the ballot. Like campaigning every two years would be insane. Like you don't stop campaigning at that point. It's a continual thing. And people need a break from it because otherwise that's when it becomes your identity. And I definitely, like I go back, I seen politics become people's identity. And when they lose it, they lose so much more about themselves. And I think when you're campaigning all the time, you're losing so much of your relationships with people. Using so much of your time to go and hike. Like I love hiking mountains. I can't do that if I'm campaigning, um, all the time. And so how do you engage people differently? We have figured a way to do that.
That makes total sense.
Mm-hmm.
Two years is crazy.
So when are you guys running?
Shit.
I'd rather die.
Yeah. Uh, I don't think I'd win in Riverside.
Maybe not Riverside, uh. Riverside elects a very unique candidate sometimes, um, but there are plenty of other.
We're diverse people over here.
It's a, it's a very diverse community, uh, on Riverside. But there are so many opportunities to like for elected office and, you know. You have two percent of people that ever do more than vote. And so that's two percent of people will donate to a campaign, will run for office, will door knock for somebody, will attend election party. And so only two percent do more than voting. And if we can even increase it to four percent, you would double the amount of candidates that people would choose from. And I think more options are better. I believe competition breeds success. So how do you get young people? And how do you get young people involved? And how do we create an environment where you don't have the, I would rather die? Like how do you create an environment? Where people like see it as something like, oh, I'm not going to be, you know, attacked every day. Like, how do you create an environment where you get people to run? Cause otherwise you don't get good people to run. Because it's, it is a challenge running sometimes. And, um, I heard a really good comment yesterday. Actually, I was at an event. And they talked about the system of government we have proves like every bad thing about me will come out. Because there is a motive for my opponent to expose everything about me. And so it's really trial by fire. And like you see maybe, you know, scandals about elected officials, but it's because there's a motive for someone to expose everything they've ever done. In some ways, that's very good because. You, when somebody goes and you're in the ballot box, you probably know as much about that person than is humanly available at that time. Because there's an incentive to do it. And it is this trial by fire. Cause if you can't handle a campaign, you can't handle elected office and people calling you and somehow finding your cell phone. And calling you about dog issues at like two AM. Like it does take tough skin. It is a different, uh, role. But I love this because I get to see, I don't know how to, you know, work heavy machinery. I don't know how to do, you know, AI technology, but I get to go and see those people doing really cool things. And how this all connects and part of a community. And knowing that I don't have that skillset, I don't have graphic design skillset. But I have the ability to figure out how to synthesize information. And so I want more young people to be involved, but there has to be an incentive for young people involved. And maybe the incentive is people won't eat you alive every time.
Yeah, I, I bet you just kinda build, build up. An ability to just shake off either hate comments or I, I doubt people have came up to you and really said real snarky stuff. Maybe it happens sometimes.
Sometimes, very rarely in person.
You probably build up the ability to shake that off.
You do. And you have a lot more people that will come up and be very gracious, um, and people that want to act in good faith, even though you disagree with you. You have some loud mouths that are gonna actively campaign against you from the second you get elected just because they either hate the party affiliation you're in. They find something about you they don't like. And they think you're, you know, evil. But, um, overwhelmingly people are respectful. They want to engage. Um, there's just a loud minority of individuals that are very loud.
The majority is always silent. The minority is.
Yeah, because they're, they're caring about taking their kids to sports games. Like they're caring about like making dinner every night. They don't wanna have to care about politics. Like if somebody's out, I believe protest is a really good thing. I believe that everybody has the right to protest, obviously enshrined by the first amendment. I think it's a good thing. But if someone's just going out there and protesting every day, instead of going out there and actively trying to figure out a way to make their small nucleus better. Then we have to figure out a way to revalue the system because that means they have too much confidence and too much faith in government to do the right thing. Government is always gonna disappoint you. Because it's broken people trying to figure out how to mess other broken people and how to push a system forward. And so we have to figure out, how do you protect the family unit? How do you protect individuals? Because if that fails, everything else fails.
Yeah, you're exactly right. Well, whether people agree with every vote or not, it takes real courage, especially at a young age to step into the spotlight and, and whatever you're doing. Like even if you're, start something like this, but politics is a completely different thing. Just. I got a lot of respect for, for, for you sticking your neck out there, just taking it on, taking it in stride.
Well, keep thick skin and doing the podcast too. Because I would not wanna do a podcast where I have to talk an hour about every policy. Cause then I do have to answer every question every time. And then you probably will piss off more people. Like, uh, somebody was like, oh, you should start a politics. And I was like, I would just get more people to hate me. Like if I had to talk about every issue very intrinsically. So it takes a risk also just to talk about your opinion and engage with people all the time in a podcast form. Because you really can't hide from your beliefs when you're talking to somebody for an hour and you've done thirteen of these, you're talking for thirteen hours about this. You can't hide your beliefs either.
Yeah, we get hate comments. We just shake them off though.
Yeah, just shake them off.
We got thick skin.
It's, it's the cat photo and dog photo. They're not real people.
Yeah, you're exactly right.
Right.
You got any to her?
I don't. Oh, I do actually. What's the, uh, when is the Kellogg construction supposed? I know it just started, but what's the timetable for that to be done? Like right at, uh, right at, uh, downtown on Kellogg.
You know, I don't know, but I will follow up and send you something and you can like post it in the comments if people have questions about that. Cause I don't have the timeline. I actually didn't even know it was starting. Uh, there's.
I'm not complaining about it. It just started, but I was just wanting to know. Cause it is down to two lanes, like at Washington to central businesses.
People can go to wichita.gov and we have, if you go to wichita.gov and click on construction bulletin. Um, we have every open construction project in the community and how long something's gonna be closed. So again, the information's there. Most people just wanna access it. Um, and so you can figure out how long it's gonna be closed, what the project actually is for, whether it's, you know, a asphalt overlay. Whether it's a paving project, but our construction bullet list all of it, any street closing in the city. So if there's a parade or a protest or anything. It's listed on there. And so people can know when they go out and do it, but sometimes it's hard to find. So I'll follow up and I'll get you the information.
Okay. You ever hear the Kellogg construction joke?
Oh, that it never ends. I think I saw a meme the other day.
The sun goes out and it's gonna go out in a million years or so, however long it is. So the construction workers are gonna have to start working in the dark on Kellogg.
Uh, a hundred percent. And I would love Kellogg expansion to continue west. East Kellogg has gotten a lot of love. West Kellogg hasn't. Like when you go out to, you know, where the cotillion is and you go further. But yet all of West, like Pratt's growing, Kingman's a growing community. Like how do we connect to West and how do we connect to Goddard? So. I'm probably gonna contribute to the, uh, meme that Kellogg Construction.
God damn it.
I know.
They'll have to start working in the dark.
We can't agree on everything all the time.
Anyways, man, you got anything for us?
I don't. Uh, again, keep up your podcasts. I'm gonna make sure to share it and engage people and.
We appreciate it.
We need more people talking about local stuff and not just local politics, but we have a lot of people doing really cool things in our community. And if you ever have any questions, happy to come on in the future.
Awesome. Awesome. You are really sharp and from this conversation, I know we briefly met a couple of times before this, but. You're really sharp and I'm glad you're in local politics. So keep it up and.
Hold me accountable.
Keep up the transparency and everything will be fine.
Yep.
So, thank you so much for coming.
Awesome. Thank you guys.
Thank you.